Joining us this evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, October the 10th, 2023. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask you, if you would, please to stand with council as we have the Pledge of Allegiance and an invocation for council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we come humbly and thankfully before you this evening, humbly acknowledging the blessings that you have poured out upon us and thankful for the many gifts that you have provided for us. We ask tonight that you be in the parts of the world where conflict and so many things are going on and that you'll be with those folks. Help us this evening to be mindful of all of those that we serve here in the city of Greer. Pray that you will be with us in the decisions that are made tonight and that we will represent all of the citizens of this city in our decisions. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
So we thank you for joining us this evening. We've got a relatively small agenda and we'll begin moving through that. We've got two people that would like to appear in public forum this evening. That's the time that we set aside at the beginning of each meeting for those citizens that would like to address an item that is on the agenda. To do so, we ask that you be mindful of the time that you spend at the podium. And as I call your name, if you will, if you will give us your name and address as a matter of record when you come to the podium, I would appreciate it. With that then, we will start this evening with Jason O'Neill.
City Council members, Mr. Mayor, good evening. My name is Jason O'Neill. My home address is 402 New Tarleton Way. That is in Greer. Four years ago, I stood before this city council as a developer and builder, seeking permission to begin what are now 12 townhomes on Park Avenue in Greer. I'm the developer and builder of that particular project. And tonight, I just want to simply advocate on behalf of the 11 other homeowners and myself primarily, as well as what I consider to be the best interests in the city of Greer. It's important to me that I am loyal and faithful to those that have served in that community. And I know when we set out, we'd never envisioned the park going away, let alone potentially turning into an apartment complex. So I know that ship has sailed. The city has moved to sell the property, so I'm not going to bemoan that or belabor that point at all. I would only ask that you reconsider the purpose of the development. It is my opinion, as a home builder, been building in Greer for over 20 years now, that homeownership is very important to the city. It's the number one driver of individual wealth in America. I had to look up some statistics just to make sure that I had not misheard. The average tenant stays in their apartment in the United States for 26 months. The average homeowner currently resides in their home for about eight years. So when we're talking about an investment in community, both financially and from a civil perspective, I think the stability that homeownership brings does matter to a community. Also, the average net worth according to the Federal Reserve, the median net worth of U.S. homeowners is 40 times higher than the median net worth of renters, 255,000 versus 6,000. This is not to denigrate those that choose to rent. This is just to promote homeownership and the value of it and the wealth that's derived from it, not the wealthy purchasing homes, but people who find wealth in the ownership of their homes. Recently, we've seen a couple hundred apartments developed here on the north end of town. We've seen 400 apartments for rent developed on the Victor Mill site. I would just ask, where are the product available for purchase? Where are the homes that people can settle down and raise families in? So I would just ask that you consider that in deciding what the future of this project looks like. That really sums it up for me. If you're not familiar with where the Park Avenue Townhome Development is, put your finger in the middle of this apartment complex and you'll find it. You would literally be engulfed and surrounded by whatever this development becomes. So I would ask that you consider continuing the path that we started four years ago. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hickman.
Hi, my name is Amy Hickman. I am at 240 Old Woodruff Road. And again, I want to speak to the future of the park on Line Street. I was appreciative that the council was very receptive to many of the comments that were made in the last reading. And I do think that one of the points made about trust in our administrators and our council is well taken. However, I also heard quite a lot of ambivalence about what really could be done in terms of controlling this development if this zoning change were made. Although it was often said, we could ask for this. We could ask for this kind of offset from the street. We could ask for many things. But the other phrase that kept coming up was that what was allowed by right by the ordinance was something that it sounded like we were reluctant to enforce. Now, it could be my mishearing. I do know, I've learned a lot through this process and city ordinances are complex and especially when we're in the process of moving to another ordinance. But I do think that we should not be naive in thinking that we can impose additional requirements on a developer than what the ordinance does because I didn't sound, I didn't hear confidence that we could do that from the last reading. I know community and walkability are themes about why we want to concentrate some residences in the downtown. But I think we want to ask the question of walkable for whom? Turner Park is not walkable for residents of Sunnyside, whereas the park on Line Street is. Apartments obstruct walkability. We talk about, we talked some about sprawl. We want to avoid sprawl. However, sprawl is an issue where an urban area has its major employers concentrated in an urban area and everyone commutes to bedroom communities. In Greer, we are already sprawled. Our means of production are outside of the center of the city. And if we are going to add to our downtown tourist attraction to that development, if we are going to have workers to man our hotels and restaurants, we need to have affordable housing. And ideally, some of that, to the previous speaker's point, would be affordable for homeownership and not just renting. I know that it was said that the vision for Line Street has always been a commercial path, but we only purchased that park 10 years ago. So I would question whether or not that has truly always been the long-term vision. And maybe we should step back and see, should we preserve some of our larger green spaces in the downtown area? Because we can't get them back once we give them up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Counsel, let us move to the minutes of the council meeting. You have in your packet this evening the minutes from the September 26th meeting. That would be September the 26th, 2023. I'll entertain a motion that they be received.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
We have a special recognition this week and I'm going to ask our Assistant Fire Chief, Josh Holzheimer, if he would, to come to the front.
Looking around me representing for the fire department, is that correct? Didn't see the chief. From now, proclamation that we want to present to our fire department in regards to Fire Prevention Week. There are some things that you never forget for some reason, and I can remember as a child, stop, drop, and roll. And that sounds so simple, but yet I am sure has saved plenty of lives over the years. And it is an important time for us to alert fire prevention, whether you are six or six or in between or under or over. And this proclamation reads, whereas the city of Greer is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, whereas fires are serious public safety concern, thus locally and nationally, homes are locations where people are at greatest risk of fire. Whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, fire departments responded to more than 166,000 annually between 2016 and 2020. Whereas city of Greer residents should turn pop handles towards the back of the stove, always keeping lid nearby when cooking, keep a three-foot kit freezer around your stove, oven and other things that get hot, watch what they heat and set the timer to remind you that they are cooking. The 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme is cooking, safety starts with you. Pay attention to fire prevention, effectively search to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore, Mayor and Greer City Council, due to your file proclaim, October 8th through 14th, Fire Prevention Week throughout the city of Greer. And I urge all of the people of our city to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week. That's what I want to present you with proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. Want to say anything about that?
Again, I'm fine. Thank you, Mayor and council, for this recognition and proclamation. But it's important that we know we have to serve our community and education is probably the most important thing that we can do. And whether it's cooking, safety starts with you and get that message out. But that's what we're here for, is to educate the public. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Merriman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, first of all, I just want to thank staff and all of our staff members who helped make the 2023 Artson Eats Festival's success this last weekend. Couldn't ask for better weather. As you are aware, our staff works with the chamber to help pull this off. And so to that staff that worked so hard on such a big event downtown, I just want to thank them for that work, especially our public services staff. They work hard to make our park and our streets just look as good as they can for all the folks that visit this event. I want to remind you that tomorrow, we are holding a groundbreaking for our new stage fire station at Chick Springs in Suburbs at 10:00 a.m. So I hope to see y'all there. Please plan to join us at this celebration. The final food truck rollout of 2023 will be on the 20th of this month in City Park with seven local trucks, including live music by Chris Gladston. The city's annual artisans market is scheduled for Saturday, the 21st at 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at City Park. And we're looking to have at least 55 different craftsmen and artisans offering pottery, woodwork, jewelry, crochet, et cetera. And then finally, and I'm remiss to read this because of the joke that is Steve Owens put in here, but if you can't just let it go, Frozen Junior is being played at our, or being performed at the Greer Children's Theater. So that little tagline is just a pun that I appreciate. I really do. Thank you, Steve. But it will be October 20th through the 22nd and again, October 27th through the 29th at the Cannon Center. So if you want tickets on how to, a little more information about that, or you want to purchase tickets, you can visit greerculturalarts.com. And of course, I just want to remind everybody that we have some really good sources of information on our new website, cityofgreer.org. And then of course, through our social media, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, et cetera, you can see and learn about a lot of these events. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, let's move to appointments of boards and commissions. We have an opening at the Housing Authority, the city of Greer. Cynthia Green's term will expire October the 31st, 2023. We've spoken with Ms. Fowler, Executive Director of the Housing Authority. Ms. Green has indicated that she would like to continue to serve and Ms. Fowler supports that. I will ask that someone make a nomination of Cynthia Green for another term at the Housing Authority for the city of Greer.
So moved.
Have a motion to hear a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions in that regard that I might help with? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Two items of old business, counsel, come before us this evening. The first is the second and final reading of ordinance number 26-2023. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by the city of Greer located at 108 South Line Street from R 7.5 to C 1. Ms. Cotty joins us this evening. Any new or additional information in regards to the second and final reading of ordinance number 26-2023? Ms. Cotty?
I do not have any updates, but happy to answer any questions.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Has there been any final plans as to what will actually be constructed on the property?
No, they have submitted for a planning advisory committee and that meeting will happen on Thursday, but that is just the preliminary pre-application before site development plan process. But it is for multifamily apartments.
It is apartments? Is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
We don't know how many are?
I don't have the exact number.
First, I'd like to say for the folks in District 1, thank you for getting, coming and being involved, last council meeting and this council meeting, and getting in touch with me by email and sharing your concerns. And you guys really brought up a lot of good points. I'm going to rehash a little bit of what I said at the last meeting, but just to make sure that everybody understands everything as far as I understand it. One, the property, the city has not entered into a contract to sell the property at this point. We are, we have entered into hashing out a development agreement with a developer. And in that agreement, part of it is what we're doing tonight is changing the zoning. The city will continue to hold ownership of the property until we, and I'm assuming council says, this is the development plan. If council does not like the development plan, whatever reason, then we have the authority to say, no, that's not going to happen. I know that we are a long ways from getting to that point. There's a lot of hurdles that the developer would have to overcome. But some of the good points that were brought up last meeting was the width of Park Avenue and how that was going to affect the lanes. And I am assuming that they'll be held to the same standards that we, that if that road needs to be widened based on city standards, that will be required. Is that correct?
Yes, unless it's in the development agreement otherwise. But yes, they'd be held to all of our ordinance standards and any development is responsible for their half of the roadway, bringing it up to city standards, both width and condition.
Okay. And I guess we would have staff and council would have input on landscaping. Of course, I know they'll be required to do sidewalks inside and on the perimeter, correct?
Yes, sidewalks on all the perimeters. And I believe it's eight feet in the C 1 and overlay.
That's right. There was mention about folks living in the Sunnyside community. It was too far to walk or to go over to Turner Park area. There are parks in the Sunnyside community. We have parks all over the city with the exception of South 85, which we're all working on. And this is part of the whole, there's this big wheel. This is the way I try to explain it. There's a big wheel. The redevelopment of that property is a spoke in it which allows us to do other things on a much larger scale so we can provide for the quality of life that people expect here in town. And I'm assuming that once the development agreement is reached, which would include all of landscaping, sidewalk, site plan, all of that, that will be brought back to us, correct?
Counsel has to approve the development agreement. Yes, sir.
And I'll continue to encourage the folks, please be involved because your input has been, it's been noted and it's been helpful.
Mr. Merriman, to Councilman Arrowood's point, would you give us a brief summation of a timetable that you and the developer have agreed on in terms of moving forward at this point?
Yes, sir. We, there was a deadline of the 28th of September that was to, that we had to meet, that we would in good faith meet up with some of the preliminary terms of the development agreement. We're actually in the, for lack of a better term, legal phase where the attorneys are actually drafting the development agreement itself and we're exchanging drafts at this time. So through that process is where we'll hammer out really a lot of the finer legal points of the document. So we will have a document to bring to you ideally in the next six weeks.
And then beyond that, there are some markers that need to be met through the course of the work as well.
There are, and a lot of those are triggered by the development agreement. But yes, sir, they are, there are markers through there through a due diligence period. And then there's a contract, an entitlement period, et cetera. So those are every bit of 360 days worth of time that will need to be exercised. So it's a long process.
Thank you, sir. Others? Questions? Comments? Other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to the second item this evening, which is the final reading of ordinance number 27-2023. This is an ordinance to amend the city of Greer Highway 101 corridor overlay zoning map established by Article 5, Section 514 of the city of Greer zoning ordinances by removing certain properties identified herein from the city of Greer 101 corridor overlay. Ms. Cotty, new or additional information in regards to ordinance 27-2023?
I do not have any updates, but happy to answer questions again.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
So I'll just add, read some comments or some concern that this had to do with somehow eroding our ability to preserve historical nature of an area, that type of thing. Just want to clarify, I feel like I'm very confident in understanding what we're doing here, but it says nothing to do with the historical nature of the area or the property itself, but removing the 101 overlay, we're doing what? Can you encapsulate that for us again?
So right now, it has two overlays on the property, which makes it very difficult for staff to interpret and enforce when they contradict each other. The Highway 101 overlay is more about access and layout and the downtown overlay has more to do with architecture and character. And so staff feels that that is the more appropriate overlay to remain in place. So that downtown overlay, which does protect some of the historic materials, colors of that nature, that would remain in place.
So would it be fair to say that removing the Highway 101 overlay simply removes an overlay that really is irrelevant to what the property is in its current form and what it may become in the future?
Staff would agree with that assessment, yes.
Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, let's proceed into items of new business. We only have one this evening, and the Daughters of the American Revolution request for a historic marker for the Greer Depot. This is a request for the approval to place a DAR, Daughters of the American Revolution historic marker in a landscape bed at the corner of Trade and Randall Street. This bronze 14 by 7, one-sided marker will recognize the historic significance of the combined freight and passenger depot. Lindsay Schaefer and Kathy Gilyard join us this evening to make this presentation.
Good evening, counsel. I'm Lindsay Schaefer. I would like to introduce to you Kathy Gerard with the Joyce Scott Chapter of the DAR. She will be providing more information on this proposed historical marker.
Good evening, mayor and council. As you said, this is a marker, I'll start off with this. The Daughters of the American Revolution are passionate about community service. We preserve history. We want to educate both young and old, and we want to honor and support those who have served our nation. This marker would be the size, it'd be bronze, 14 by 17, one-sided marker. We would like to request your permission to place it at the intersection of Randall and Trade Streets so that it is at an angle where you can be seeing it visible from both directions. The proposed wording you have in front of you. And I would like to let you know that this will educate the public and honor the history behind the Trade Depot and the Greer Depot and... And I want to thank Councilman Hopper for his involvement in this, and Cunningham and staff. Any questions?
Was there, or is there any thought to the fact that there were preceding depots that were as important and probably carried more freight than the one that we're recognizing? I think it's excellent that we were going to recognize one of them, but certainly there are much older depots and more strategic in terms of rail sightings and things that happened in that area, particularly as this city grew from just a trade area to a city. So any thought in that regard?
Yes, we've worked very hard and diligently to verify every single word that you see on the proposed verbiage. The depot itself, because of its history with PNN and serving as a depot for both freight and passenger, that's what makes it unique. Whereas before, it was primarily freight. The process to have this approved by DAR at the national level can take up to six to eight months. And we have to provide not only proof, and we have two and three times proof of what is every word in that document. And then we will have about seven weeks to manufacture it. And so our proposed date to unveil it would be April 27th of next year, which is also happening to be the 90th anniversary of our chapter. Did that answer your question?
It did indeed. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Others?
I'll quickly say, my wife and my son would tell you that I am the guy, I'm the man who always wants to turn around and go back to a historic marker if you pass it on the road, or stop and read favorite words. I'm super excited to be part of this effort.
Wonderful.
Pleasure to be with you all the other day, looking at the site and to recently meet you. Appreciate what you guys do in our community in terms of historic preservation and education, patriotism, very important roles that you play. And I enthusiastically support what we're doing here.
Thank you very much. We hope this is the beginning of more.
Absolutely.
How many markers have you guys placed in and around the city?
In Greer, the one that is on Line Street, which is the Cherokee Boundary Line, that was placed originally back in the 1950s. We have done surveys of the cemeteries in Greer that are now with Woodmore Cherry and with the city. That's the only marker that we have placed.
So the one, because we voted to relocate it some years back, right?
The one on Line Street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, the highway, yes. That was not done by us. That's a South Carolina marker. Yeah.
The one that was the Cherokee?
Boundary Line, yes. That's the one we did. But that's also a South Carolina marker. That's a different process to get a South Carolina marker as opposed to a DAR marker.
How quickly do you expect this to happen?
Well, we're hoping that it will be all ready to install and being unveiled on April 27th.
Okay.
Just as a matter of housekeeping, I think we're doing some landscaping down there.
We have, we've talked with staff, and we all met last week, and we pinpointed the exact spot, and Councilman Harper was there. It looked like the best spot to be visible from, and the tree that's there and two other trees are coming down. It will be the rectangular form. The wording is visible from at least 10 feet. So you don't have people trying to step into the bed to get to it.
Good. Others?
Yeah, I appreciate the history lesson, especially on the Greer Depot. But I'm still kind of confused of how your organization valued train depots, and how'd y'all come to conclusion and get all this approved with the organization? Because I'm not super familiar with DAR. I mean, I know enough to be dangerous, and I went on the website, looked you all up. But just trying to understand, so when I convey this to my community, how is this important to you all?
When you're trying to preserve history, you need to bring attention to it so that it doesn't become a victim of a wrecking ball. Our next project will be the museum, the Greer Museum, and hopefully what's inside of it. In that case, we'll be working on a $10,000 grant towards that. We want to possibly look to the future of placing another marker to recognize the history of Trade Street. The tourism in South Carolina, we hope will increase with recognition of Revolutionary War sites throughout the state. That's called the Liberty Trail. And there are already some sites that are being recognized, more are coming. Every site that is recognized as a Revolutionary War historic site generates tourism dollars, of course. And we want to not have Greer, Greer has so much history to it. Taking the Ghost Tour is just an introduction to the history of this great little town. And we want people to understand that this was not just a rowdy, Wild Wild West-type town when it was first, and we want to show them how it developed. So.
And the railroad itself was indeed a huge genesis of this town.
Exactly.
It could have been south of here.
And the PNN had a northern section, it has a southern section, which would be, the northern would be Spartanburg going north, and the southern would be coming through Greer, which hardly gets mentioned. I will tell you, that is, we've done quite a bit of research, and it's very difficult to see the name Greer in there. Like, it'll say Spartanburg to Greenville. And you have to really dig deeply to find Greer mentioned. And of course, it's gone through different names of Greers, Greer, Greer Station. So that's, we're trying to educate people.
I guess that's just historical, because BMW swears there in Spartanburg.
Not their address, is it?
All right. Others? We appreciate the information and all the work that has gone into this. This is an item that will require action. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Have a motion and a second. Questions? Comments? Further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, with that, we have no items in executive session this evening. Stand adjourned.